Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Canton Township Board of Trustees meeting on July 22, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Can we please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Seegrest, can you please take roll call?
I will start, indicating that Trustee Foster is absent. Trustee Ansari.
Good evening.
Trustee Ganguly.
Good evening.
Trustee Borninski.
Good evening.
Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Seegrest is in attendance and saying good evening. And then Supervisor Graham Hudek.
Good evening. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with a couple additions? That would be resolution of the Board of Trustees, Charter Township of Michigan, opposing the Salem wastewater facility. And then we also have, SEMCOG is going to be doing a presentation of a check.
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt the agenda as amended, adding Resolution 2025-27 during the Presentations, Recognitions, and Formal Resolutions section of the agenda, along with a presentation from SEMCOG.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrest, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, we are going to start our Presentation, Recognitions, and Formal Resolutions with SEMCOG presentation. So SEMCOG, the Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments, is a regional planning organization that serves 4.8 million people in southeastern Michigan. And they have been doing a great job and going all over southeastern Michigan, giving federal grants to communities like ours. And so this is Amy Elia, the Executive Director, and she's going to talk about what this is about.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. And you're right, it's not every day that we get to go out and about southeast Michigan and deliver some good news. So I want to start by thanking you for your membership to SEMCOG. We are the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, so we are an association of local governments. We have 185 cities, villages, townships, community colleges, counties, and the intermediate school districts that are members of ours. So that's one hat or one role that we play as a council of governments, bringing people together. The other is, we have a number of federal designations. So we are the federally designated transportation agency for southeast Michigan. As a metropolitan planning organization, for example, one of the things that we do is we put together a list of transportation projects that are voted upon to receive federal funding. So we have right now, for example, a transportation improvement plan, which is a $3.1 billion plan for spending federal funds over the next few years. So that's one of the roles that we play as the planning agency for transportation. So one of the other things we get to do, though, is we have a lot of separate transportation funding opportunities. And so the one I'm here today about is called the Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP. And that's a federally funded program. And I wanted to just mention that, as the MPO, we do facilitate a number of projects. And we like to think that SEMCOG is the connection between the data, the technical resources, and the funding between local governments and the federal government, and often the state of Michigan as well. And so today, we want to celebrate a TAP project that really, one of the people that supports this work a lot, as you all probably know, is the Congresswoman in your district, Debbie Dingell. So Debbie's been really instrumental in making sure that the bipartisan infrastructure law was passed, and that included the programs that fund the project that we're talking about today. So we always like to make sure that people recognize the work that Congresswoman Dingell does do for us. So we are here to celebrate a TAP project awarded to Canton by our Regional Review Committee. So we have a committee at SEMCOG that's made up of all elected officials, and that group looks at all of the projects that get submitted, and the staff does a lot of the technical review. But it's all the elected officials that decide which projects get funded. And so the elected officials chose this as one of the projects that they would like to fund. And so one of the reasons that the committee and the staff really like the project is that we really have a large emphasis on making sure that we are safe, and that traffic safety is hugely important, especially for the most vulnerable users of the system. And that's our walkers and our bikers and our kids. And so knowing that what you all put forward was something to help make sure that your pedestrians, your bicyclists, but also the kids are getting safely to school, was hugely appropriate and seen as a real benefit. I think it's also appropriate right now to recognize somebody else, and that's Evan, who is here. And Evan, why don't you stand up? And this is Evan from Canton Township. I know you guys already probably know him, but he is, you know, it's not every day we get an advocate for traffic safety at this age and wants to work with a regional planning agency about it. So Trevor Leighton's done a great job of working, and we just appreciate your passion and enthusiasm for traffic safety. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, and then I just want to end this by saying, one of the reasons we're so excited about this project is, you know, right, you're going to construct almost two miles when you add it all together, filling in gaps and connecting to those important schools. I think it was safely to four schools was what we heard, something like that. So anyway, thank you for all you're doing.
I'm glad that you put forward this application, and we're happy to fund it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We did do a presentation of the check with pictures already, and there's a copy of the check right there. You can see $900,000. And like you said, in Michigan, I mean, in Canton, if you live within a mile of the schools, you walk. And so, you know, this is old farmland, and a lot of sidewalks were missing, and this is going to help us pay for some of those bridges so kids can walk to school safely. So we really appreciate it.
And I guess, let me, I'm sorry, I need to add one more thing. And it's very interesting, in our townships, because the townships don't own the roads, right? And so in order to receive this funding, you need to be the owner of the road or get them to support it. So we do want to thank Wayne County, they were supportive of this project, and Commissioner Dobbs is here as well to show that support. So making sure that the county and the local communities work together is an important part of this, too. So thanks for that as well.
Thank you, as partnerships and collaboration. Thank you. And one, so Evan also is, like you said, is a Canton resident, and he won the spelling bee from the Chamber Commerce. And he actually, it was his passion to work on road safety, so he contacted SEMCOG. And then SEMCOG contacted us and said, we have one of your students that wants to work on this. And so he's been at the, or was it at the Liberty Festival? He's been in the lobby of, he and his sister, I should say also. Yes. They've been in the lobby of our summit, and then you were also at our Trails Day, passing out information, because it's really important to you to keep our community safe. So thank you for all you do. But thank you to SEMCOG, the county, and Evan, and thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great. And then our next resolution, Clerk Seegrest is going to read.
Madam Supervisor, I move to repeal Resolution 2025-23 and adopt Resolution 2025-27, Resolution opposing the Salem Township wastewater treatment facility and granting consent to Salem Township pursuant to MCL 247.183 subsection 1, to construct and maintain a sewer line within the public right-of-way through the Charter Township of Canton to connect the treatment plant to the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority in Ypsilanti, Michigan, subject to the below-listed conditions. Whereas Salem Township has applied to the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, or Eagle, going forward, for the permits authorizing treated water discharge from a wastewater treatment plant in Salem Township to service Salem Township's urban service district to be located on the west side of Napier Road and the south side of M14 with affluent meeting state water quality standards to discharge into Fellows Creek. Whereas Eagle has issued a Part 301 permit authorizing Salem Township to discharge an estimated several hundred thousand gallons of treated wastewater per day into a tributary to Fellows Creek. And Eagle has advised Salem Township that it intends to issue a Part 31 NPDES discharge permit to allow treated water discharge from the Salem wastewater treatment plant unless a viable alternative is identified to allow Salem Township to construct and maintain a sewer line within the public right-of-way from Salem Township to the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority in Ypsilanti through Plymouth Township, Canton Township, and Van Buren Township. Whereas since July 1, 2017, Salem Township has released and reserved wastewater treatment capacity at YCUA to ensure that capacity at YCUA would be available to serve Salem's urban service district when needed by Salem Township, and such reserved capacity continues to be available. Whereas Eagle has always supported the construction of a sewer line to connect Salem Township to the YCUA wastewater treatment wastewater plant in Ypsilanti as part of a regional sewer system instead of constructing, construction of a local wastewater treatment facility in Salem Township. Eagle has further expressed that a regional wastewater system, such as a connection from Salem Township to YCUA, minimizes the impact on the waters and streams of the state. Whereas Salem Township prefers to the construction of a sewer line to connect Salem Township to YCUA wastewater plant in Ypsilanti as part of a regional sewer system instead of the construction of a local wastewater treatment facility in Salem Township. Whereas Canton Township has experienced severe flooding in recent years along Fowler Creek and Fellows Creek and in the areas along the desired route of the sewer line, which additional water capacity from a wastewater treatment plant would aggravate the flooding conditions in residential and commercial areas. Whereas Canton Township has many residents on septic systems along the sewer line route and connecting to a sewer line would be advantageous to residents, reducing the risk of water contamination and waterborne diseases, improving water quality, protecting our creeks, rivers, and lakes, and may be required by Wayne County. And whereas Michigan compiled laws 241.183 subsection 1 authorizes a township to consent to a municipality's installation of sewer pipelines underground within another municipality if the governing body of the township, along with these sewer lines, are to be constructed and maintained, approved, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton to grant consent to Salem Township pursuant to Michigan compiled laws 247.183 subsection 1, to provide these viable pathways to construct and maintain a sewer line within the public right-of-way through the Charter Township of Canton to connect to the treatment plant of the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority in Ypsilanti, Michigan, provided, however, that such consent is conditioned upon the following. The sewer line will be built, tap-ready, with stubs along Ridge and Denton Road in Canton Township, so that homes and businesses on septic systems may tap into the sewer line. When their septic system fails or they choose to tap in, the basis of design will be determined jointly by Salem Township, Canton Township, and Plymouth Township engineers. Engineers from Salem, Canton, and Plymouth will also jointly determine the number and cost of pump stations necessary for the design. Two, Salem Township agrees to withdraw, and the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy agrees not to not issue a national pollutant discharge elimination system or NPDES permit for a wastewater treatment plant, WWTP, in Salem Township. Three, the replacement of all trees, shrubs, landscapes, and natural beauty impacted or removed by the construction and maintenance of the Forest Main. Four, the provision of an operations and maintenance plan for the addition of the Forest Main through Canton Township to be reviewed and agreed to in writing by Canton Township. The operations and maintenance plan shall be the subject of an intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, between the parties. And finally, five, execution of a release and waiver by Salem Township agreeing to indemnify, defend, and hold Canton Township harmless for all claims and liability in law or equity due to the negligence or intentional acts of Salem Township or third parties during construction of and for the life of the Forest Main.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrest, supported by Trustee Ganguly. We have also in the audience Supervisor Whitaker, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything, or it's up to you. Oh, it's okay. So the group met last Monday and Thursday, and we worked hard. We had this Supervisor Whitaker, myself, Supervisor Kermy, and some of board members were there, and also Commissioner Dobbs, and we had our state representative, Dana Polhanke, Senator. She helped facilitate. Congresswoman Dingell was there via Zoom. Commissioner Melissa, Melissa Dobbs was there. We also had Matt Colazare, Representative, and Gigi Perry that was there. Eagle was there. So we worked on how we could come together with this and stop basically, you know, the wastewater plant. And this kind of, this, I think this, these last bullet points under resolve, 1 through 5, is what we came up with. And so I think this is a good place to start. STAN-TAC was, is hired by Salem Township, and then we work with WETRIM, so the engineering teams are working together to find the best solution, you know, looking at where the houses are and determining how we pull them all together and service the residents as the sewage pipe goes through Canton Township. Any questions about, from the board or comments? Or was, Tanya? Kate?
So I think this is a great example of how different township governments could come together and work to find a resolution, you know, a good resolution and solution for both townships. So I appreciate that Supervisor Whitaker came to the table and that Canton did also.
Tanya?
Yeah, I thought it was great discussion. I missed the first day, but the second meeting was great. We had Wayne County, Washtenaw, all the municipalities that were involved. And so I appreciate all of the hard work, everybody. It was a long meeting, but it was well worth it. A lot of discussion, but it was well worth it, and we did have engineers here also guiding us, too. So this is a great resolution, and I appreciate all. I know you were really working hard to get everybody to the table, so thank you.
Oh, thank you. Who else? Tanya?
Yeah, I agree with Trustee Borninski, and that this is, thank you so much for coming to the table, everyone involved, and also our township employees and people who came together to have this long conversation involving all the governments. And this is how we can collaboratively come to a solution if we decide to work together.
Thank you. And I know our deputy supervisor and MSD director and engineering teams can help lead this effort, and your teams are hard at work already, right? I think everybody started on Monday or something, started working together, so that's good. And what's good about is they, a lot of them know each other, so, and they've worked together before, so that'll be a good synergy. All right, great. There's a motion on the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Great, thank you. Thank you. All right. Oh, any boards or commission reports? Tanya?
The senior alliance council met last Wednesday, and we did have Erin talk to the Council on Public Transportation, the survey we have, and educated them a little bit, which was great. Our seniors had some great comments, and they're going to encourage others to take the survey online, which is very important.
That's right.
So the Leisure Services Advisory Committee met last Wednesday. Unfortunately, I missed the meeting because I had a conflict, but it was a, I'm sure, quite lovely tour. And I was wondering, Joan, if you would, since you're a member of LSAC, would you like to tell everyone about it? Okay. Sorry for putting you on the spot.
Is the speaker on?
Yep.
I'm Joan Norix. I serve on the Leisure Services Advisory Committee, just a new member this year. We had a really nice tour of the Village Art Factory and Preservation Park and the new park that's going behind what the old Human Service Center in the Chirrell School. So we were out there about an hour and a half and walked and got updates on all that's happening. It's really quite exciting to have that development of new trails and some of the new addition, the Village Art Factory looks really great. You know, it was all full of residents doing lovely things. So yes, I think it was an excellent meeting, and it's really going to be a great addition in the western area of the township. Any other questions? Is that?
Thank you.
Questions? No? Thank you. Tanya?
So after the master plan has been finalized, there was, there was some conversation about having some subcommittees, and we recently met last week, like a housing task force to start discussing, because, you know, housing is a continuing crisis all over the country. So we are working to see with very, with our planners, with some of our township employees, some of the board members. We have started a task force, and we are working on what I would say, getting some options for attainable housing, as Clerk Seegrest would say, for Canton, so that we can have many people who work in Canton and who cannot afford to live here, including some of our township employees, and also different businesses. And we really hope to come up with the solutions and some solutions in the future. It was a great start, and we had some great brainstorming, and we will involve external stakeholders to this project in the future, and we'll keep you updated.
Mara, did you want to talk about the drone task force, or?
I'm going to try.
Okay.
So just a couple days ago, I think it was yesterday. No, I don't even remember. Yeah, yesterday, okay. So yesterday, we met for the first time on the drone task force. There are a couple of executive orders that have come from the President's office that will regulate how drones will operate. The idea is to expand the use of drones through the use of AI and to promote public safety and commerce amongst other things. And what our job is now is to develop an ordinance to determine how we will be regulating the way that drones will be operating within township borders. We don't know exactly what that looks like yet, because we just had our first meeting, but we'll keep you updated.
Thank you. The Sustainability Committee met, and we're talking about, we sent out a survey to some businesses to see how they can become more sustainable, and IKEA is helping lead that effort, because IKEA, that's one of their main things is, they, a lot of people don't know, they have solar panels on top, they're going to be putting in level four chargers, I'm sorry, level four, level three chargers in front of the building, and they are going to have classes on sustainability and how businesses can become more sustainable. So we're going to be sending out more surveys to businesses and even giving some awards to some of the businesses as they get more sustainable and help us out with keeping the landfill not full. All right, thank you. Now we have public comment on agenda items only. Anyone in the room, public comment on agenda items only? All right, I'm looking online. If you want to do public comment on agenda items only, please raise your hand. Any? Okay, great. All right, thank you. That's closed now. Approval of minutes for July 8th and July 15th. George?
Yeah.
On agenda items?
I'm getting checked.
Okay.
George Miller, we were just talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, on the sewer plant, Salem, coming this way through Canton. I'd like to know if that's going to be a pipeline from that facility over to Ypsilanti? And why, if, how much water is wastewater per day? I think there was 100,000 gallons put in Fellows Creek. Why can't it be going, why are they doing that? Why can't it go, all of it, over to Ypsilanti?
I'll just answer you, George. The resolution was quite long, but I just want to let you know that we did, we did ask for a pipeline, and that's what the communities are working together with, a pipeline, just to let you know that. It won't be, so that would eliminate it going into Fellows Creek. That's our, that's our goal for everybody. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Treasurers' Report, Payment of Bills. Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't get there. All right, that's right, I just said it. Okay.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt, or approve, rather, the minutes of July 8th, 2025, and July 15th, 2025, as presented.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrest, supported by Trustee Borninski. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next, Payment of Bills.
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Consent Calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board adopt a consent calendar as presented with Item C1, consider increasing blanket purchase order to MTAC. Item C2, consider award of purchase order for the purchase of installation of one OM electric valve actuator at the OM, at the water storage facility to JGM Valve. And then finally, Item C3, request approval to renew SolarWinds annual software agreement.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrest, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. General Calendar, consider final plan development district and site plan for Viva Bene.
Madam Supervisor, I move to adopt Resolution 25-25 to approve the final plan development district and site plan for Viva Bene with conditions.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrest, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The applicant proposes to construct a housing for the elderly at the southwest corner of Ford Road and Gorman Road, located between Beck Road and Canton Center Road. The proposed housing for the elderly used consists of 180 units on 17.25 acres, which are proposed as follows. 140 units of independent living in the main three-story building and 40 attached cottage units, which are 17 two-unit cottage buildings and two three-unit cottage buildings. Site is currently zoned R1 and R3. Housing for the elderly is a special land use in the R1 and R3 districts, and the proposed planned development district application is consistent with the zoning requirements for housing for the elderly, with the exception of the modifications proposed pursuant to the zoning ordinance. Each PDD is required to demonstrate definite benefits to the community. The major benefits proposed for Viva Bene are as follows. Paving of Gorman Road to the site entrance, including reconstruction of the approach to three lanes, which dedicated right and left turn lanes from Gorman Road onto Ford Road. Two, extending the sidewalk along the south side of Ford Road eastward about 620, 620 feet to connect to the existing sidewalk in front of Bell Tire. Number three, adding northbound and southbound right turn lanes at the intersection of Canton Center Road and the Ford Road to permit overlap phases for northbound and southbound right turns. Next, maintaining over 25% of the site as open space, architectural design of the buildings, and creating outdoor recreation areas for residents of the development that will include a swimming pool, pickleball court, bocce courts, and a dog park. Although these amenities are only available to residents of the development, their use by Viva Bene's residents lessens the use and impact of public recreation facilities. At its meeting on July 7, 2025, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the final PDD and site plan. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add. Unfortunately, the community planner, Patrick Sloan, is on vacation, so he's not here. But Erin Schluto might be online, and I know her son was in the Baseball World Series, so she was trying to break away, but she may not be on. But also, we have our representative from Viva Bene, who's been before you before, who can also answer questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Kate?
I noticed that in the documents we received that the wetland setbacks are going to be less than the 25 feet that we usually require, and I was wondering if there's any way that we could keep the 25 feet, I guess? I'm concerned about that.
Erin is not online, so I don't know.
Erin is not online?
No.
Also, I was, when I was looking at the maps of the site provided, I noticed the detention basins are pretty close to the cottages, and I wondered if there had been any thoughts about mosquito prevention or anything, you know, smells.
I can't speak to the mosquito issue, but I can speak that they are going to be making these stormwater ponds bigger than what's required by Wayne County. these stormwater ponds bigger than what's required by Wayne County from a flooding issue. But I can, I'll defer to the applicant about the mosquito issue. If you want to speak to that, Matt.
My name is Joe Christopher with Spalding De Decker, the engineering consultant for Viva Bene. To speak to the mosquito issue, Wayne County's preference is a basin that has essentially a wet bottom. During discussions with Wayne County, we, there is an option to do a dry basin, which essentially does not have any standing water. It empties out completely. And we would definitely be open to those options as we move further in the design process. And that is something that we will discuss further as the county reviews the plans.
Okay. I think, I mean, in order for these to be, you know, homes that people enjoy living in, they're gonna want to be able to spend time outside, too.
Absolutely. We'll definitely bring that forward. I could also speak to your comment about the proximity of the detention basins to the homes. The basins, while the contours show, you know, the basins being a certain distance, they meet the minimum required setback. But also, we do not plan on storing completely to the elevation. We were providing larger ponds than necessary. As we refine the calculations, the storage elevation likely will not be as close to the homes as it currently presents itself.
Okay. I guess, you know, it looked like, from what I was reading, that you were planning for the 100-year flood.
That's correct.
And lately, we've been having those way more often than every 100 years. So I think, I'm glad that they're bigger than theirs, you know, than, than they need to be according to regulations. But we also have to keep in mind that severe weather events are happening more and more often.
Absolutely.
And then my final request is I noticed about the wetland mitigation credits that can be purchased. I noticed that they are supposed to be within the Rouge watershed. And I think I requested this before, but I am also requesting that any mitigation that might take place, and I know it's a very small, it's only one point something acres, but if there is mitigation, that it please take place within Canton Township.
We are working on an ordinance for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Had you purchased mitigating land up north at all or anywhere else, I should say, not just up north?
Hi, good evening. Matt Quappus with Avenue Development. We're the developer for the project, also the project sponsor. The mitigation credits were purchased by the previous developer, so there isn't really the opportunity to, you know, replace those because those are already purchased for the site. I can say that if additional mitigation would be required, we would work with Canton Township to identify opportunities within the township to mitigate that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G2, consider awarding a purchase order for the design of 2026 Major Road Improvement Program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve issuance of a purchase order to Fishback Incorporated for the 2026 Major Road Improvement Program to perform professional engineering services in an amount not to exceed $137,000, along with the associated budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Major Road Improvement Program takes place each year based on the rolling five-year road improvement plan. This plan is updated annually by engineering services with input from the Road Improvement Advisory Council and the Township Board. The 2026 scope of work includes milling and resurfacing existing asphalt as well as resurfacing of existing concrete pavements. The following locations will be included. Lily Road from Cherry Hill Road to Ford Road, about one mile. Morton Taylor from Candlewood to Joy Road, about a third of a mile. Fishback was retained in 2018 in a competitive bidding process to handle professional engineering services for both the design and construction engineering on the major road program. In that time, they have provided efficient, reliable, and quality services for engineering services under the existing master service agreement. Their familiarity and knowledge of the road millage program and township requirements make them uniquely qualified to provide more efficient, consistent, and economically feasible services versus consultants completely unfamiliar with this program and the township's processes. For this reason, Engineering Services wishes to waive the purchasing policy of obtaining three proposals and pricing from different vendors and award it directly to Fishback. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't, I don't really have anything else to add, though we're excited to start talking about '26, so. And I know some of you know Lily Road is pretty bad there. And also, I do spend time up on Joy Road near Morton Taylor at some of the coffee shops, and I know that road's kind of rough there, too. So looking forward to getting it repaved.
Any questions or comments? We've been asked a lot also about Hagerty Road. Is that on the county's?
Hagerty Road, south of Joy Road is something they're gonna be targeting.
They are.
But it's, it's gonna be probably three years out, though.
Are they just resurfacing or are they replacing?
I don't know the scope of how far they're gonna go.
Okay.
Because I know it's pretty rough up there, so, from the trucks.
Okay. All right, thank you. All in favor, any questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G3, consider awarding a contract to purchase order to replace the ADA handrail at Preservation Park.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and increase the purchase order for Decima LLC in the amount of $10,723 for the replacement of the ADA handrail at Preservation Park.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Ganguly and Trustee Berninski. In 2024, the Board of Trustees approved an RBA to perform historical restoration carpentry work at Preservation Park with the use of grant Wayne County Cherry Hill Village Town Square SL FRF project funded by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. The grant was helped, was to help preserve and restore historical sites here in Canton. During the intensive repairs to the house, the large handrail had to be removed. While removing the handrail, most of the leg supports were deteriorated beyond repair. We also found a new, a few connection points in the upper handrail itself where the welds had been broken as well. Knowing the handrail is an ADA requirement, replacement of the handrail is the only viable option. Investing $13,794 to replace the broken handrail is an upgrade not only to the overall aesthetics of the house, but also for the safety of our guests. Having the work completed now as a project is currently ongoing is the most proactive option at this point. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything to add, but happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Is this money in the budget?
Through the grant, yeah.
It should be.
Yeah, it's through the grant.
Because it doesn't require like a budget adjustment or budget amendment? And so the only reason this is coming to the board is because it's over $10,000?
Correct.
And are we currently looking at those thresholds in our purchasing policy?
Yeah, we talked about that at staff today.
Yes.
All right, that makes me very happy.
It was a big discussion today at staff, yes. All right.
I applaud that effort and I look forward to not seeing RBAs for $10,723 brought forward shortly.
January 1st, they're gonna do it because they have to clear all the POs for the year. So January 1st is the target date.
I know, I know finances been working, they're really hard this year.
We're giving you five more assignments, Wendy.
We're gonna, we'll, we'll increase it by $500.
$723, right?
Things like this one, though, are a little bit different because the, the purchase is actually for well over $100,000. So when you're increasing a $100,000 purchase by another $10,000, that's, it's a little bit of a different scenario than just a $10,000 purchase order. So, you know, we are looking to revise the purchasing policy, though, to answer your question. And things like this will be discussed and brought before the board, and we're looking to make that effective for January 1st.
Kate, you had a question?
Yeah, just in case anyone watching is wondering, assuming this is at the Bartlett Travis House?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
What else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G4, consider approval of application for the MDNR Wildlife Habitat Grant Program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the submission of the application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for the Wildlife Habitat Grant to be used towards restoration at Zibowes Nature Area, to accept the funds, if approved, matching up to $15,000 from the 2026 Parks Miscellaneous Line item in addition to $8,534 of in-kind services totaling $23,534, or 16% of the total project cost of $146,214, and approve Resolution 2025-2024 in support of the grant.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Berninski. The Michigan Department of Natural Resources Wildlife Habitat Grant is offering local, state, federal, and tribal governments as well as profit and nonprofit groups a grant opportunity of $50,000 to $500,000 for projects focused on restoring large complexes of grasslands and savanna habitats. Originally acquired in 2000 through the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, the parcel was once slated for active park development. However, in June 23, the Canton Board of Trustees adopted an open space and nature area preservation ordinance, placing a permanent conservation easement on the land. With guidance from the Pokaban Band of Potawatomi Indians' Representation Outreach Board, the area was renamed ZB West Nature Area, honoring the creek running along its northern border, which means Creek Park. Canton Township, in partnership with the Canton Nature Society, is seeking approval to apply for a Michigan Department of Natural Resources Wildlife Habitat Grants to be implemented in 2026. The application for the grant will assist Canton Township with the additional funds at ZB West Nature Area and the restoration of native plant inventory, prescribe burns, targeted herbicide applications, cut stump treatment, native seed collection and propagation, habitat enhancements, in addition to the Pollinator Prairie Expansion. Canton is committed to allocating $15,000 from the 2026 Parks Miscellaneous Line item in addition to $8,534 of in-kind services totaling $23,534 to use for a 16% grant match of the total application request of $146,214. Clerk Segras, did you want to add to this?
I would just like to bring up an online, you have the Canton Nature Society present, President Susan Kennedy. Additionally, I believe you have Jordan Fisher. Jordan is the organization's treasurer. She was the individual who found this grant and brought it forward for consideration for the township to apply. It, it fit the work that Canton Nature Society had been looking to do at Zibowes, that the Board of Trustees had asked Canton Nature Society to perform in 2023 when we established the nature area. And also called for the creation of the Canton Nature Society to assist in, in helping administer, you know, act as informal stewards of Zibowes Nature Area. I would also point out that Joe Norix, who is also a board member of the Canton Nature Society, is in attendance as well. So we wrote a, Canton Nature Society provided a letter of support. Additionally, did, walked the property with a naturalist, inventoried, came up with a list of management recommendations addition, and costed it out. And then we worked with Leisure Services, Community Development, Finance, and the township's grant writer to pull together a pretty quick application process. And we additionally were able to get letters of support from Representative Pori's office and Senator Paul Hankey's office as well. So we feel confident in the application. We believe that the money, if awarded, will really benefit the property, which is plagued with a number of invasive species. And, and we're hoping that we can help facilitate good habitat and reduce some of the invasives that have made their way onto the property.
Thanks. Director Hohenberger, did you want to say anything? I know Leisure Services is on here.
It's really hard to add anything on to what Clerk Segras said. He really did a fantastic job of summarizing everybody that's involved and the purpose of the grant and everything, so happy to answer any questions, but.
Thank you. Susan, did you want to say anything?
Just that the Canton Nature Society is very excited to work with the township and apply for this and appreciate all the work that's been done by everybody in the township to help be a part of this and, and help make it something that's, we've been told, is pretty strong. So I'm very excited that we're putting this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Kate?
Yeah, I'm just assuming that as part of the application process that we are needed to guarantee some matching funds, and that's why we have.
Yes, it requires a 10% match. We exceeded that with a 16% historically with the DNR. The, the higher your match percentage above and beyond the minimum, the more likely for funding, so.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G5, consider authorization to purchase a single rider adaptive golf cart for Pheasant Run in Fellows Creek.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of a single rider adaptive golf cart for Pheasant Run and Fellows Creek from Solo Rider Golf Cars for a total cost of $17,861.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Segras, supported by Trustee Berninski. So to ensure that Canton's facilities provide accessible equipment to all our residents and beyond, it is necessary to replace the current adaptive cart at Pheasant Run, which is over 20 years old and is also used by Fellows Creek. As an approved item on the CIP, Canton Leisure Services advertised an invitation to bid for the purchase of a single rider adaptive golf cart to be shared by Pheasant Run and Fellows Creek. In May 2025, Leisure Services advertised an invitation to bid for a single rider adaptive golf cart to be shared between Pheasant Run and Fellows Creek. As a result, one bid was submitted but was eliminated due to being overpriced based on earlier research. Canton Leisure Services solicited a quote directly from the manufacturer, Solo Rider Golf Cars, which came in lower than the proposal that was submitted for the bid. Therefore, Canton Leisure Services is requesting approval to reject all bids and award the purchase of a single rider adaptive golf cart from the Solo Rider Golf Cars for Pheasant Run and Fellows Creek for a total cost of $17,861. Director Hohenberger, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, we're excited to get this piece of equipment in our hands. We currently do not have an accessible cart available to our residents to use it either course. We had one that's out of commission, so this will help us to provide access for everyone at the golf carts. If you haven't seen one of these carts before, it's a single rider cart. The seat swings out. You can see, you can swing from a seated position and it has different tires that kind of spread the weight out more so that you can drive the vehicle onto the greens, where typically your vehicle can't go on the greens. You can drive it on the green for putting and get full access to the course. And then we'll, depending on who needs it and where, we'll move it back and forth between the two courses. Because the carts don't get a ton of use, but it'll allow us to have use at both courses.
And it'll be kept with the rest of the golf carts in that area, correct? Okay. Question? Kate?
Sorry, I guess I have a lot of questions tonight. I was just wondering, first of all, I think this is definitely something that is needed. But I was wondering, what do you do if the cart is at Fellows Creek and somebody at Pheasant Run needs it?
We'll, we'll have listed on our websites information about the carts and that we request a 24-hour notice if you need the cart, so then we can, that'll give us time to move the cart back and forth if, as needed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, this is great. So it's, it's, so they have to schedule ahead of time, basically. Okay?
Correct.
And they can take, of course, and you can transport up to the golf course and get in the golf cart and golf. Great.
And we've had a resident that is, that I've spoken with, and Director Howell has spoken with a couple of times, that is very eager and excited that we are going to be purchasing this cart.
All right. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is authorize a township supervisor to sign all necessary documents to join the Purdue Sacklers National Opioid Settlement.
Madam Supervisor, I move to authorize the township supervisor to sign any and all necessary documents for Canton Township to join the Purdue Sackler National Opioid Settlement Agreement.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. A proposed nationwide settlement agreement has been reached with Purdue and the Sackler family concerning alleged misconduct related to opioids. The proposed settlement is being implemented in connection with Purdue's bankruptcy proceedings and consists of, among other things, a settlement of Purdue's claims against the Sackler and certain other parties, and a settlement of direct claims against the Sacklers held by states, local governments, and other creditors. The settlement contemplates that the Sacklers will be paying an aggregate of $6.5 billion in 16 payments over 15 years, including $1.5 billion on the settlement's effective date, expected to be 2026, though some amounts are subject to discounted prepayments. These amounts are in addition to amounts available from the Purdue estate, including amounts available on the effective date, expected to be around $900 million, and amounts that may be paid in the future. The settlement also contains injunctive relief governing opioid dispensing practices and requires this successor in interest of Purdue Pharma to implement safeguards to prevent the diversion of prescription opioids, and also restricts certain Sacklers from direct or indirectly engaging in the manufacturing or sale of opioids. Canton Township has been asked to join the $6.5 billion Purdue Sackler National Settlement Agreement and ongoing opioid litigation with manufacturers and distributors of opioids. According to the distribution chart, the state of Michigan will receive $154,921,056 from the settlement, which will be divided among its political subdivisions. Deputy Supervisor, do you want to add anything?
I'm happy to answer any questions. I will just say that we don't know yet what Canton Township's distribution will be from this particular settlement. The distribution chart does have numbers for each state. As the supervisor stated, Michigan's share of the $6.5 billion settlement at this point is estimated to be approximately $155 million. And so when we get a division of how that $155 million will be divided among Michigan's political subdivisions, I can provide that to the Board of Trustees.
Questions or comments?
Yeah. So, it says here that the expected effective date is around 2026. When can we expect to start earmarking for the local Canton Township budget for this, do you think?
That's a good question. Right now, the effective date is expected to be in 2026. We don't have a month. We don't have really an estimated timetable other than it will be next year. And I think part of that is because Purdue is currently in a bankruptcy proceeding, and bankruptcy proceedings can sometimes be a little bit unpredictable. But it appears that Purdue has agreed to this settlement amount as a part of its bankruptcy proceeding. And so I think we could expect payment sometime in 2026, and it sounds like there will be 16 payments over 15 years.
Just to let everybody know, if you don't, we have been in these lawsuits for a while, and we have received some monies, and we have utilized them currently for the social worker. Wendy, do you know how much we've received total to date?
If you give me a minute, I can definitely look that up pretty quickly. I do think we've received quarter of a mil to 300,000 or so, so far. But the settlements vary. Sometimes it's a one-time payment upfront. There's a few of them that are over 17 to 18 years of period, and sometimes they pay us years one through five upfront, and then we're going to get another one. So it really varies, and I'm not sure what the settlement ultimately looks like right now. But overall, so far, we have received... Last year alone, we received about $270,000, and the year before that was like $57,000. And it's, that just has to happen to be when their payments are due to us. It varies every year.
It's a difficult thing to budget for, because we don't necessarily know exactly when payments are going to be made. We do have an internal chart that we use for our expected payments in any given, in any given year, but it tends to vary in terms of, you know, even within that chart, it tends to vary what we're expecting and the amount that we actually get. Thus far, you know, we've been able to get the amounts that we anticipated with a couple of exceptions. But, yeah, so it's a difficult thing to kind of forecast.
As of the end of 2024, we have received about $300,000 more than we have paid out. And currently, we've been using that money for our social worker program. So we still have about $300,000 at the end of '24 of excess funds from that, from the settlements.
Any questions, Michael?
I won't ask a question. I'll just say how beautiful I think it is and how poetic it is that Canton Township has chosen to take the proceeds of these, of this litigation that we've been involved in over the last couple of years and put it towards our embedded clinician and embedded social worker program that we do in public safety. A lot of people were made criminals through addiction, and you don't go to the doctor thinking you're going to become an addict. And a lot of very wealthy people made a lot of money very quickly by getting people hooked on pills that they didn't need. And it did a lot of damage to our society, overburdened our police force, and I love that we are using it to help people get services, and we're doing it through our police force. I think that is an excellent use of the funds that we've had up to this point. And I hope, as we move forward, that we continue to be really creative about how we, how we use these funds, once we take them.
Anything else? Definitely overdoses are still, still out there. It's, I mean, it's not just in Canton, it's everywhere. There's still overdoses. So, this helps, like you, Michael, said. Fortunately, one day it'll be hopefully a thing of the past, but right now it's not, so these funds help people. All right, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Consider a request to approve a letter of agreement between Canton Township and the Technical Professional and Office Workers Association of Michigan Union.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the letter of agreement between Canton Township and TPOAM as outlined.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. Canton Township is always striving for good rapport with its labor force. Letters of Agreement are shared understandings between Canton and its collective bargaining units and areas of concern, not covered by the current collective bargaining agreement. Sometimes called Letters of Understanding or Side Letters, these agreements allow each party to the collective bargaining agreement to effectively handle issues that warrant attention during the contract period but were not contemplated by the parties at the time of the agreement. The township implemented the Earn Paid Sick Time Policy earlier this year in compliance with the Michigan Earn Sick Time Act, ESTA, Public Act 338 of 2018. The policy allows applicable staff to earn one hour sick time for every 30 hours' work. Due to the TPOAM contract, continuing part-time clerical staff that have less than two years of service would not have access to this benefit. Therefore, a letter of agreement has been directed to allow TPOM continuing part-time clerical staff with less than two years of service to have access to the benefit as outlined in the ESTA policy. Director Rochelle, would you like to answer any comments?
Yes, the township did have a smooth rollout of the Earn Paid Sick Time Policy earlier this year. Our part-time and variable hour staff do have access to this benefit, and this is really just an expansion to make sure that we are inclusive of those clerical staff who have less than two years of service that are in the continuing part-time status to have access to this benefit as well. So, I can answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Tanya?
Yeah, I'm just glad that we went above and beyond what was required by the Earn Sick Time Act, and I'm glad that our part-time staff who, you know, since we have such a high turnover in the part-time staff, it's good to have some good policies for them. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. G8, consider approval of tuition payment for degree program.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the payment for tuition fees and books for the deputy supervisor to attend the Masters of Public Affairs program at the University of Michigan and authorize expenditure of up to $39,000 for a three-year period for the degree program.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. The Canton Board of Trustees approved an organizational assessment by Novak Raftalis in February of 2021. Out of that assessment came the recommendation to improve organizational climate and culture and support workforce development. Workforce development refers to the systemic efforts to build and enhance the skills, capabilities, and competencies of employees in the township. This process can involve everything from education, training, career counseling, and job placement to creating policies that foster growth and improve outcomes. It's all about preparing employees for current and future job demands while supporting the township and having access to a skilled workforce. Deputy Supervisor has been admitted to the U of M Masters in Public Affairs Program. U of M P A program consists of a small cohort of accomplishment policy professionals from across the US and the world. The program combines training and rigorous applied policy analysis with the development of high-level public sector management, leadership, and communication skills, focusing on complex domestic and international policy issues. The M P A program is designed for seasoned skilled professionals with several years of policy-relevant experience in government, military, government affairs, and the private sector, and the nonprofit sector in both US and abroad. The M P A program offers carefully-designed, challenging coursework in economics, statistics, policy writing, values, and ethics, public sector management, and leadership from US and world leaders. Because Canton Township is Michigan's ninth-largest community and both a policy thought leader in southeast Michigan, the role of deputy supervisor is both local and statewide. This degree program offers to strengthen Canton's relationships regionally and throughout Michigan and the US. The supervisor's office requesting approval of payment of up to $39,000 over the next three years for the deputy supervisor to attend the M P A program beginning this fall. This will be paid for from savings in the township's legal budget, which have totaled over $200,000 per year since 2022. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Additional public comments? Any additional public comments in the room? Please come to the podium. Public comments? Online? If you would like to make public comment, please electronically give a thumbs up and raise your hand. Any public comments in the room? Great. Yep. 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 Yep.
I want to thank you guys, because I got my notice in the mail the other day about that 38% increase in the water bills. I thought, how nice is this? I know you guys are hard up for money, and I thought, well, I'm just kind of dumbfounded. I thought that was a pretty juicy increase. I don't know why. I think you would have done a better job on it, but I know you've got to have water. The other thing is, I paid my taxes the other day. I don't believe in procrastinating, and I know you guys need the money, because you're spending an awful lot. But it's necessary. And also, somebody should give a shout out to the fire chief. He was on WJR the other morning. I can't think of a time when anybody did a better job explaining, and this had to do with the firefighters that were being killed. I don't know if anybody else caught the interview, but somebody ought to say something to the man. It was an excellent interview. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Emma, do you have anything to add? Greg? Rochelle? Ed? Wendy? No. Dave? Deputy Supervisor?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, board comments. Tanya?
I have nothing to add.
Michael?
I'll just, just take a moment to let people know, you know, one of the benefits of being a township as opposed to a city is that we do not have any scheduled elections this year. It's, we will find out shortly if we will have a November election, but typically we do not. So, we will not be having an August primary. That, you will see that in some cities. Invariably, my office will get angry phone calls from people who are upset that we did not send them a ballot or notify them of our election, but we don't have one. So, I'm taking this opportunity to let people know that we will not be having an election in August of this year.
Thank you. Amara?
Yes, I took notes this time. So, today, we had our ribbon-cutting ceremony at Preservation Park. The barn that was previously there was, you know, destroyed a couple of years ago due to a fire, but it's back up and running. And we had a few elected officials and members of the community there today. And that is where we will have our farmer's market, which was previously at the Village Arts Factory for a little while. And from now until October 12th, we're going to have that from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM every Sunday. So, go check that out. And also, want to thank everyone involved on the resolution that Clerk Seeger's read out today on the building of the sewer pipes instead of the wastewater treatment facility. My family home is actually near where, you know, the water would have flooded into the creeks, so it would have contaminated some of the drinking water in my own home. So I'm grateful for everyone who has put this together, and also thankful to Supervisor Gary for willing to budge on this. It's not easy when you're looking at the benefits that could come out of something, but ultimately, you know, our resident safety and health is our main concern. And also want to congratulate Deputy Supervisor Hoffer on being accepted into the M P A program. He and I are both 40s now, hashtag go blue. So, just a quick little shout out to him.
Thank you. Kate?
Yes, so, if anyone has looked at the weather forecast, we are supposed to get hot again. And it looks like the heat index values will be over 100 on Wednesday and Thursday, so starting tomorrow. So, everybody, please stay cool and drink a lot of water, stay in your air conditioning, and don't forget about your pets.
Treasurer Slavens?
Yes. Well, everybody hopefully can stay cool as our weather starts to get hotter. I did want to mention, you know, we do rate changes once a year for water rates. The water rates have not gone up since April, when we changed the water rate. So, some people use more water in the summer months, summertime, and watering their lawn and their garden, so their, their water bill might be higher because their water usage is up. But we have not increased the water rates at all.
And that was due to GLEWA, a big increase from our water supplier. Correct. Thank you. Also, Rowland Ridge is this Friday out at Preservation Park, so join that if you can.
10th anniversary.
10th anniversary? 10th anniversary. Great. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Meeting is over. Adjourn. Thank you.